Long time ago, you're not going to be able to keep pulling money at the general fund. You need a tax levy, and Mr. Rourke said the same thing, so anyway.
Mr. Rowe, Damian Rowe? Welcome, Mr. Rowe.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, good evening, sir.
As y'all know, I wear many hats. And as a pastor and my other hat as a pharmacy technician, I just want you to know how much people out here are hurting. While I understand the vital importance of our EMS and our fire departments, vital importance, I just want you to be aware of how much individuals are struggling every day. Last week, Elder Delaney couldn't afford a $4 medicine. Every day, I deal with people who have to make the hard choice, food or medicine. And at the church, we deal with people who need to use food banks to supplement the food that they're able to buy. And I understand the need for these services. I just don't know how much more the citizens can stand further tax increases. And I don't envy y'all's job. But I know I just want you to be aware of these are the things, and I'm sure many of you see these same things every day too. And I just know that in my 24 years in the pharmacy and in my 20, over 20 years as a pastor, these issues are becoming more and more frequent. And even in my own family, people are hurting. They don't know how they're gonna not just make it to the next month, but hardly to the next day sometimes. These decisions that have to be made, I just need you and want you to have a full picture of everything. And I know that we have to make hard decisions. But I just want to be a voice for people that are struggling and need to know that there is help, not another burden on them. And thank you very much for your time.
One moment, Mr. Rowe, I do want you to know, and nothing, we haven't decided anything.
Yes, indeed.
Both Daphne and I, and then I've talked with John, and maybe with Dickie, that we're researching tax relief under certain circumstances.
Yes, indeed, yes, indeed.
So it's, you know, it's age, it's income. And we've talked to some of the local, other counties. The night that I had to change my mind for Solder, one of the things I'd like to see is some of those sighting agreements go into an account that people can apply to, to help them with their tax burden. So there's been discussions about that.
Yes, indeed, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Just so you know, nothing in, nothing in stone, yes, just discussions.
Yes, indeed, I definitely appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe. No one else on the list on the side for fire? Anybody else want to speak? Take a motion to close the hearing on the fire district levy.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Bowen, you want to introduce the emergency services district?
That's right, we're not voting tonight, I keep forgetting on. Introducing, this is the last one, is the ordinance to establish a countywide emergency service district. This, this item came up before the fire, but as you heard Mr. Tomer say, fire is right behind it, heard Mr. Joyce Scheneff say the same thing in a meeting, and Zach Baer has said, fire is right behind it. We, when we met with the, with the emergency service, emergency squad and Burkeville, they're in a situation, they need to meet payroll. And, and you just heard the last speaker, and people are, people are suffering and have to pay taxes. However, there's a great concern that when we dial 911, nobody's gonna show up. If you can't meet payroll, we got problems. We got problems because we're required by the code of Virginia. So this ordinance is to establish a countywide emergency service district for future possible tax levy, but you have to have it in place.
I do want to say one thing that's kind of been a change in the last week. We were saying fire and EMS levy, so one levy, one ordinance. Our lawyer advises that it's two separate. So you have a fire ordinance, you have an EMS ordinance. And when the levies are set, if they're set, you'd have some going to fire, some going to EMS. And that will change every year as the budget changes. It'll be part of our annual approval for the budget, just so everybody understands that part. Mr. Tomer? Want to speak again?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
I support it.
Okay. Kristi Romano? Thank you for coming up, Ms. Romano.
Thank you, I want to have a disclaimer. I have a fear of public speaking, so excuse me. I will try my best. So my name is Kristi Romano, I'm a proud citizen of Crewe and a certified EMT advanced. I am speaking today out of deep concern following the live stream board supervisors meeting with Nottoway County Emergency Services, held on April 14th, which I watched closely. As a healthcare provider, mother and resident, I feel it's important for the public to understand that NCS is an independent entity. They are not obligated to respond to 911 calls within the county, and at any moment, they can choose to stop answering those calls. Presently, NCS operates only one 911 designated ambulance for the entire county. The level of care provided by that unit varies, sometimes it's staffed by basic level, sometimes advanced, and occasionally the paramedic level. This variability poses a serious concern when I call 911 for a level one in cardiac arrest, or a child involved in a major incident or critical emergency. I want the reassurance that the responding team is equipped and certified to provide the highest level of pre-hospital care. Right now, the assurance simply doesn't exist. What's more concerning is that the funding being requested by NCS is not to improve the 911 coverage in the county, it is support the current operation of one 911 ambulance. Two paramedic level ambulances that is serving the FASI. According to the information shared on the April 14th meeting, their contract with FASI includes a clause requiring NCS to deploy the third paramedic unit level ambulance within 30 days if requested. This raises important questions. If NCS is required to support a third FASI unit, what happens to the only 911 ambulance available to Nottoway County? Will Nottoway County settle for a lower level of care during life-threatening emergencies? I understand the financial burden this discussion entails. This is a significant investment, and I urge you to ask yourself, what is the value of a human life? Can we afford to rely on inconsistent care, unpredictable staffing, and unstable funding model? Our community deserves reliable, advanced emergency medical services. We deserve to know that when we dial 911, help will arrive timely, equipped, and fully prepared to save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romano, I do want, each fire department is also a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So the code, the code of Virginia allows the boards, the board supervisors, to give money to a squad or to a fire. But they're all the same, they're 501(c)(3) nonprofits.
And I'm, I'm in full support of the levy for both fire and EMS.
Okay, thank you. Abby Messer?
Good evening, Board.
Thank you for coming, good evening.
My name is Abby Messer, I'm a lifelong resident of Nottoway County. First, I want to start off with saying thank you to anybody and everybody that has volunteered on the fire departments and for the EMS. I am a volunteer myself for youth programs in Nottoway, and they are right, volunteers are shrinking in number, and they are very important, they're detrimental to everything in this rural county. However, I have an issue with my taxes going way, way up when they just did. And specifically because I'm a property owner, I just find that it's extremely unfair for people that own property to be the only ones to have to carry the burden of the EMS and the fire departments when everybody in the county utilizes it, even people that pass through the county. If they get into a car accident, EMS and fire are there. They go somewhere and get hurt at a, at the ballgames or something, EMS and fire are there. I just want you to think about some more creative ways to try to solve this problem that maybe can share the burden across everybody in the county, not just the people that own property. Because if my taxes go up much more, I'm gonna lose the land and the home that I grew up in. And if I do that, since I inherited it, I definitely can't sell it to make any money because my mother bought it in 1984 for $75,000. Can you imagine the capital gains taxes that I would have to pay? And that would leave me with barely any money to buy a home in this $300,000-some-dollar real estate economy that we have for two-bedroom homes. It's, it's insane, so. And like Mr. Rowe said, the people in this county are suffering, we are suffering. We're pinching pennies, we're deciding where we can rob Peter to pay Paul. I tell you, every month, at the end of the month, before my next paycheck, I'm like looking in my credit card statement saying, which one can I get up to the limit this time? So I can pay a little bit more when I get my check on the first, so I can do it all over again at the end of the month. Thank you so much for your time, and again, thank you to everybody that has volunteered on the fire department and for EMS. I have used your services in 2010, you saved my house from burning down. I called you in 2020 when my mother was sick with cancer, and she would fall, and she had sepsis, and I called you not too long, a couple of years ago, when I thought I was having another stroke. So I just, you're much appreciated and you're much valued, it's just our pockets can't take much more.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Abbott, Sonny Abbott?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and my constituent, Mr. Rourke. I stand here tonight as a resident in no other capacity. I have a bit of a concern time-wise. You're not going to vote tonight, you'll have to vote at the next regular board meeting because you're only allowed one of those a month. So that'll be the 50.
One, one second, we can vote when we're together, correct, Mr. Elder?
You can take a vote at a specially-called meeting.
We can take, we have a work session next week.
You can do that, that too.
Continue, Mr. Abbott.
Okay. So, well, let's just do the math. Between now and the time the '25, '26 budget is supposed to be approved and authenticated, we'd have to be foolish to think that with all of these actions here tonight, that you're not going to establish some kind of dollars and cents or an amount for each one of these levies to be put into the budget that will take effect July 1 of 2025. A friend of mine, Mr. Rowe, spoke to you just a little bit ago. I'll add a number to what he talked about. Seventy-one percent of the students that attend our schools in Nottoway County are considered economically disadvantaged. Now, I have said this before, I'll say it again, you can't tax me out of the county. I might be the oldest one in the room, but you can't tax me out. I might leave one day, but my concern is, is that where's all of the information, the transparency of what is supposed to happen? Who's gonna do what and when? Are we just throwing money at it? We're just gonna give more money to an organization because of circumstances? Now, there are folks in here that I respect because they do things I, I couldn't. And they know that I respect what they do. But where's the information? Where's the data? What kind of system are we going to have? Are we just going to transfer tax money that you will collect sometime in November and figure out what you're gonna do between now and then to support what needs to be done? But where's the information? Volunteers are going away, so we're gonna have to hire folks. Well, what's that process? What are the salaries and benefit packages that we're going to have to support? I agree, if you dial 911, you want somebody to show up. And as old as I am, I probably have that opportunity before somebody else. And I'll just give you a clue, I was getting out of the military when Mr. Ingram graduated from high school. So, give us some information, other than just tell us about a tax levy. Share with us the plans, the structure, the organization, what's it gonna look like? In the Courier Record, not too long ago, Chief Tomer structured out something for the rescue system, put a rescue at each of the fire departments. Are we only going to fund Crewe? The Crewe EMS and leave Burkeville out? In the current budget, there's a certain amount of money in there for fire and rescue, correct?
Correct.
If we have a special assessment, does that go to zero?
Budget hadn't been approved, Mr. Abbott.
Once everything is approved, and again, I'm not foolish enough to think that three of you are gonna vote no. But if there's, and I'll just pick a number, if there's $400,000 in the current budget, and that goes away because now you have a levy, won't the 45 cents drop to 42 cents or 41 cents? And then you're gonna put whatever number of cents it is in the levy, split it up between the two. I don't know if anyone's considering that, or are you just gonna keep that money in the regular budget and spend it on something else? Because we seem to be able to vote things in without figuring out how to pay for them. We did that with the radio system, everybody said we absolutely had to have it, but we didn't know how to pay for it, and we're trying to figure out how to do that now. And I agree that if you're gonna have a levy for fire and EMS, are you gonna have a levy for a radio system and add it to? Or is that just gonna be a part of the regular budget? Some of that information need to be shared with us between now and when you're gonna appropriate or approve a budget, which is, what, 45 days, 50 days away from now? That's, all I'm asking for is a little transparency.
Well, this, this process has continued on, there's been several meetings, there's been the public work session with, you have the squad. We had a meeting with the fire chiefs yesterday. We've tried different numbers, we've looked at different ways to split it up. So all of these things are being discussed, and we're going to have a work session, a public work session next, next week. We're trying to come up with some different options, which will be talked about in public. And that's, we, we had something that happened during budget requests that we've had to educate ourselves on and learn, and then try to stall them. And that's what we've been doing, Mr. Abbott, I want you to, I truly want you to know that.
I appreciate that, that's what you're trying to do, but not everybody can attend the meetings, those other meetings that you have because some of us have other duties and responsibilities.
Mr. Abbott, can I, can I interject? I just received today the Virginia Fire Services Board study for Nottoway County Fire and EMS that was done in 2021. I wish I'd have received it a little sooner, but it details everything that you're questioning it. But it's a work in progress, sir. We, we're, as we're getting things together, we're trying to map out a plan, and we will be transparent. But we can't tell you something that we don't know ourselves yet. This came on us less than a month ago, and we're trying to combat all the data and accumulate. Buddy Hines been great trying to get us data from all avenues, but we can't.
I've worked him to death.
We can't give you data that we haven't accumulated into some kind of sense.
Or that the board has agreed on, we all have data, we have to make a decision.
I'll be glad to send you this study, so you can read.
I don't, I don't need a study from 1921, what I would like, what Sonny Abbott would like.
You said 2021.
2021.
Mr. Abbott, why do you think the $400,000 would drop off and go away? You said the $400,000 would go away.
Simply because currently in the bu, in today's budget, there is a certain amount of money that was.
Allegated for the EMS and to the fire, correct.
Between Burkeville, Blackstone, and Crewe. Well, if now you're going to tax in a separate.
That would, to my first knowledge of that would be in addition. That $400,000 wouldn't go away, and this tax wouldn't, wouldn't apply to the $400,000 already be given to them.
Also, you're.
That's my first initial, now, we gotta, we gotta look at the numbers a little closer, but.
So some of us are now learning a little something else. So not only are we going to have a tax levy, we're going to leave money in the current budget for the same thing that we're gonna have a levy for.
Okay.
Me prematurely thinking, I would say that would be the case, yes, sir, I think you'll find that out.
This is why we're not going to discuss numbers tonight, because nothing's been decided. We've heard you, Mr. Abbott, we're working very hard. There'll be one side and the other side, be general fund, and then be fire, and there'll be EMS, those will be separate. I appreciate you speaking tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Outlaw?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Board members, Mr. Bowen.
Sir, Mr. Outlaw.
What I had planned to say tonight does not fit into one of the boxes you have on the agenda. That being said, and not to take up your time or the others.
What's the topic, sir?
Long-term funding for our needs going into the future. What I've got to say is not going to provide any near-term relief.
Okay, well, this, you can, we're talking about raising funding, so that is, you know, in the agenda, if you want to talk tonight. Or if you want to wait till bu, till the actual budget night. That's either one.
And I'll, and I'll send you all something in writing in an email and let you have some time to give that some thought.
Okay.
Anyway.
You sure you don't, I mean, it's funding, that's what we're talking, we're raising funds.
But this won't affect the near term, so.
Okay.
And I, I would like to say, four of you five inherited a mess of gigantic proportions. You know that better than I do. And I thank you for all that you're doing to try to work through all of this stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's our final speaker. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak that hasn't spoken? Mr. Chief Shute, would you like to speak? Come on up.
We're gonna have to dial 911 and pick you off the floor in a minute.
I've added Chief Shute to the list, so he's on the list.
All right, thank you, I didn't get here evidently timed enough.
Okay, well, we'll make accommodation, go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna speak, but, you know, I think there's a couple of things need to be explained. Of course, I've been coming here for thirty-some years to form this board. It's always for the same reason, trying to do something for the volunteers and to build funding. I don't like taxes anybody, any more than the next person. I feel like it's a rural county and, and, you know, pay my share. But the bottom line, I just heard the page go off again. And Burkeville's answering its 32nd call in three days. And as Chief Tomer said, it's all changing. The volunteer's not gonna be able to carry the load, and it is about the payroll. And, you know, as far as gathering data, I know there's been a lot of data gathered. I applaud the board, the current leaders, and past leaders for sitting down and trying to map this thing out. Because it's obvious we got to do something, so. I appreciate the levy, not the levy, but the district, because, you know, there's four different agencies here, which had to have one district, or you had to have four districts and four levies. So get the district done so that everybody understands it, is so that you begin to develop a way to fund. We all know it's gotta be funded. And, and, you know, I've had discussions with supervisors, and I've sat in some meetings, and, you know, I thank the current leaderships of the fire department and rescue squads for allowing past leaders to sit in on some of that. Because we felt like we helped build it to where it is today. It's just it needs a little more help, so thank y'all for that. For the citizens, all I can tell you, 32 calls in three days. And it tells itself. And the volunteers aren't gonna go anywhere, there's tremendous savings using volunteers, and there's always gonna be some. But for everybody in this room that doesn't volunteer for emergency services, just imagine, day in, day out, answering calls, losing sleep. You get my age, sleep's valuable. You know, usually if I go to sleep now at night, I'm down for the count till 3 o'clock in the morning, and then I'm back up because I can't sleep. So, welcome to senior citizen world.
All right, I almost.
But anyway, thank y'all for what you're doing. I know it's been tough at times, and sometimes, you know, patience gets a little thin, but, you know. I had a good conversation with some folks recently, and everything stayed civil. And I think it was a genuine desire to try to fix this problem. The volunteers want to fix it, and I believe that the board wants to fix it. And if you do put a tax levy in, that means instead of coming down here and begging for money that's not here and ended up with just barely enough to scrape by, maybe we'll end up with something that serves the citizens, the programs, and we'll have, you know, our department's been around for 117 years. I hope they'll be around for another 117. So anyway, thank y'all, and thanks to the citizens, I know the concerns, I have them too. I've got a fixed income just like everybody else. You raise my taxes, you know, it comes off that fixed incomes, but it is what it is. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Somebody's raising their hand, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Taylor? Sure.
I'll put your name down, come on up, sir.
Come on.
You were here after the chief was back up here anyway, so that's fine. No, you're fine.
We hear about, y'all hear about raising taxes or not raising taxes, right?
We're not talking about numbers tonight.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just spitballing.
What we're, what we're establishing is a, is a fire district and an EMS district.
Well, yeah, but you need funds for that.
Which then allows us to, to charge money.
But you need funds for that, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm on a fixed income, and I don't think it's getting fixable anytime, no time soon. But like I said before, the only way you're gonna have to do it, you're gonna have to raise taxes. Cut services, you don't wanna do that. Unless you get two people, Taylor Swift and Miley Cyrus, come down here to a concert for it. I don't see, I don't see no Fortune 500 company coming here. Like I said before, they coming to Mill, they coming to Chesterfield, they going to Mecklenburg, they then with it, they leaffrogging over us. So I don't know how you gonna solve it, but we ain't getting no young people here. And none of us getting no younger, if you put it on our back, we gonna say our bill, we gonna deal with it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Appreciate it, Mr. Taylor, thank you for coming.
Pete, would you like to give your opinion on it? I'd like, I value your opinion, could you add him to it, Mr. Chairman? Pete Morrison?
I don't know what much I can add to, whether anybody else has already said.
Tell us a little bit, just a little bit about your EMS background, if you would.
Well, it goes back to 1981, that's when I started volunteering, but it was in southwest Virginia. And then my first career job was in Prince William County, and then I came to Chesterfield. And fortunately, the last fifteen years of my career, I was on Med Flight. And I got to meet a lot of my neighbors out here, and I know how much people out here struggle. You guys didn't call when it was somebody needed a band-aid. You guys called us. You guys called us when somebody was severely hurt, or severe, severely sick, so I do appreciate that. Fire and EMS, and I'm lumping them together, I know it's two separate issues, two separate tax levies or whatever, but firing EMS is not a business. It's a service. If you're going into firing EMS to make money, you might as well throw your money down the toilet, because it is an absolute money loser. So I am, I do support this, support the firing EMS system. I give as much as I can, not, not my, not as much of my time anymore, but I do contribute monetarily to it. This is gonna sound crude, but to paraphrase an old line from Full Metal Jacket, "This is a big crap sandwich and we're all going to take a bite." So I don't know exactly what the answer is. I will, I'm willing to offer any help or any opinion that I can to, to, to the county, because firing EMS, this job goes back a long way in me, and I consider it a passion more than, I didn't just do it for a paycheck. It meant a lot to me over the years. And I hated to see people suffering like Deon and everybody else has said, it has changed significantly over the years. I used to be excused from class in high school to go answer a call. My employers would say, "Go ahead and go on that call." That doesn't happen today. People are not willing to let you walk off the job to go do the call. As far as the money goes, as far as the tax levy goes, I know the short term is to support firing EMS. Is that the current system, or is one of the ultimate goals is to get paid providers in all the stations?
Our understanding is.
Basically, you don't, you don't want the answer, Bill, it's, I guess it's a rhetorical question.
But it's, that's, that's the direction that we're going, with, with, as volunteers have declined. The, the biggest change right now is during the day, you need a paid squad. Because in, at night, people have come home from work.
Yep.
And they can, they wanna go hang out at the station and run, run some calls.
The two departments I was with were combination career volunteer departments. And I've, you know, seen what happens in that relationship, so.
So, Denwoodie County, our neighbor, primarily all paid, EMS and fire. And they didn't do the levy, they just have it in their, their regular rate. So that's, you know, we have to take steps, and this is the first step.
EMS is ninety what percent paid?
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five percent paid currently, right now, EMS is.
I believe that's a misconception by the public, that they think the majority of our services are volunteer, and that is no longer the case.
I hear a lot of the same thing, that they thought up until recently that it was volunteer.
And if, if this county, I'm pretty sure it does, follows the stats of neighboring counties, you're looking at about an eighty percent EMS call volume versus twenty percent fire.
That's about, that's about the same. Interestingly, we've had some citizens that moved here that came from higher taxed areas of the country. They thought EMS was paid, so.
I do better than that.
Educate, well, just, we have to just educate our citizens so they understand. And as far as making calls for minor, for band-aids, you know, have somebody, you know, take you to the hospital or doctor's office. Yeah, that's the best thing.
You've done our job right.
I'm talking about the, the citizen. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Pete, appreciate that.
All right, any other? You wanna come up? You wanna, can we do a double? I guess we can do a double.
He was on there for a double, I think, then he decided not to.
Yeah, that's right, you didn't, you didn't speak the second time.
I wasn't gonna speak.
So yes, you can speak.
But I do wanna offer my support for the levy, I'd strongly encourage, just like Mr. Romano and Mr. Abbott said, there needs to be a structure, a understanding of what the taxpayer is paying for. This, our EMS system has been running, we've had one ambulance for, sometimes it doesn't work. The call volume, they run over two thousand calls a year. It would work if you get us a standalone ER here, maybe, in Notaway County, where we could do the turnaround. But when you're having to drive an hour to a hospital, it ju- it just doesn't work for our citizens. Including the volunteers, at nighttime, we're here, but four o'clock in the morning, we gotta wake up at seven o'clock to go to work. We gotta figure paycheck versus volunteer. So even in the middle of the night, sometimes we have to make that critical decision. Can I go to work with only three hours of sleep to go to this call? Because I gotta put a paycheck on my family's table as, as well. So the time is gonna come where putting that ambulance, putting some firefighters together, running the models of other agencies, running the leadership or the command structure of other areas around us is gonna be necessary to make firing EMS work. Also remember that your fire departments are also EMS. The Blackstone and Crew also have first responder program that support Notaway County Rescue Squad. We developed that in nineteen ninety-four in Blackstone as a first responder program, because at that point, Notaway County was failing, Notaway County Emergency Squad. We had members going in their personal vehicles with jump bags to be able to offer assistance to people. Notaway County Emergency Squad stepped up to the plate. I was one of the first, one of the few first hired for Notaway County Emergency Squad as a paramedic back in the day. It was a great job. I thoroughly enjoyed it, and then I went to nursing school and kinda went a, a different path. You know, you gotta have your heart in volunteering, you gotta have your heart in firing EMS. If I didn't have a heart, I'd be sitting at home watching this on YouTube, probably. But it's important, it's important for our citizens, I understand the struggle. This didn't happen overnight. This has been going on for years, and it just hit that tipping point of where we are now. We probably could have not done it so drastically a long time ago, but the time has come to where we flipped that coin. So, once again, thank you, this is truly an honor that it is being considered. It's been something that's been needed for a long time, so it's great that this board, I'm sorry it was put on your plate, but thank you for taking the, the consideration of, of moving forward with something of this magnitude, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're done with speakers.
We need to close.
We need to close, I'll, need a motion to close the public hearing on EMS levy or district.
So I moved.
I'll second.
Hold the favor.
Ah.
Ah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if you give me a few minutes to speak freely, to kind of give you a timeline, since the public is, is concerned about a lot of these, what's happening and what's the, what's the plan. We have a work session next, next Thursday at May eighth. I'm gonna ask you to vote on these four items that you heard tonight from the public, for these, the levies and the court's assessment, courthouse construction, and. The plan is that at that, at that meeting, I, we will have another group to, is gonna give a presentation. It's called ESS, Emergency Services Solution. They just bring in labor to help. I've heard good, good things and bad things about that, but let's, go let them do a presentation. I've had conversations with the Notaway County Emergency Squad leaders. I'm hoping that they may be able to come to the meeting and, and mention, make possibly that we could have some of our members on their board, and somebody had mentioned, what's, what's the plan? The plan, the strategic plan is, we're not doing no, no three-year, four-year, because we don't know, we're gonna do a six months and a year to try to get this thing turned around, okay? Or three months, six months, nine months, a year, who knows? At that meeting, I will present you some numbers, and, and, and as, as, with a balanced budget, and I'm gonna ask you to possibly let us have a public hearing May twenty-second, and then with the possibility of adopting the budget, May twenty-ninth. I want the public to, when they look at it, I don't want the emergency services to get blamed for anything, but when you first look at that balanced budget, it looks like it's in, it has increased six million dollars, over six billion. That is not, Notaway Emergency Services problem, that's, that's not them, that's nothing to do with the fire. That is the school, they had a six million dollar grant, and it's, it's no match, they're having a, and I think it, and I'm hoping they get that grant, they can replace a roof of the building that's much needed and some windows. So I'm asking the public, when you see those, when you see that budget, look at the line items. Don't, don't say, hey, this is, this is where the six million dollars is coming, because that's no truth. The, uh, we, 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 the reason why I wanna adopt the budget, May twenty-ninth, we, I'm gonna ask y'all in the regular May meeting to move the June, the third Thursday is June nineteenth, that's a holiday, and I'm gonna ask y'all to go to the last week of June to have a, a, a meeting. I think we, we need to, I know we need to honor that holiday. And so I do, I do not wanna take the chance of adopting the budget the last week in June, and if we do not do that, we will not meet the Code of Virginia. So that is the timeline that I'm giving you tonight, and I, I, if somebody says, well, can I see some of the numbers now? I, I'm, I'm hoping the finance committee, I think was hoping to get it finished by Tuesday, so we can present it Thursday. But we're getting close, very close, okay?
Very good.
Okay.
Any members have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Any more?
I'd like to say to all agencies out there, we're working, we're working hard. I and my family have had to use these services several times, and I appreciate what everybody does. I can't, I can't say enough about the volunteer services, and, you know, I've ridden a helicopter, I've been carried by the squad, I've had fires at my home, my house, and people, when you talk about volunteers, I had five fire departments at my house one o'clock in the morning, fighting that fire till three o'clock in the morning. And I looked around, and I'm like, wow, this is amazing. But people need to understand, my number one concern for this county is the safety and welfare of its citizens. Fire and EMS are the number one priority to be safe and, and have good welfare. And that's what we've gotta do, we've gotta come up with a plan to provide that for everybody. So when you pick up that phone and call nine-one-one, somebody's coming, it's gonna be an equipped squad or a fire department that knows what to do, and that's what we have to have. You know, we've been going too long, just passing the buck, passing the buck, passing the buck. The buck has stopped, I guess it's stopped with us. And we're gonna try to fix it as much we can. Thank y'all so much, appreciate it. Everybody that volunteers and comes and helps people, because that's what it is, it's helping people.
Ms. Norton?
I, I can say that I'm a little disappointed in the lack of turnout tonight, because my phone blew up this week and last week. And I'm, I'm a little disappointed in the lack of in-depth discussion. But at the end of the day, the Code of Virginia dictates what we have to do as far as emergency services. We have to provide nine-one-one. It's not gonna be easy. And I want to clarify, Abby, this isn't just real estate, it's gonna be a tax levy on real estate and personal property, both. That incorporates every person that has a vehicle. But we don't have a revenue stream, we, Mr. Ingram and Mr. Bowen and I have been on that committee with Ms. Raifert and Ms. Hudson. We have beat our brains out trying to figure out where this money is coming from. We don't have revenue from business and industry. And I am dumbfounded at the amount of people that thought the prison paid taxes. That none of the state agencies pay taxes, none of them. And I'm gonna put Mr. Hyde on the spot, because he's been in the middle, being the mediator between everybody. And that's what he was hired to do. And we have worried him to death for information, but one thing stands out, we talk about, you've gotta go. The squad has got to go. And since we recently backed up, Notaway Emergency had to go back to one spot, one squad because of funding. Mr. Hyde, how much are we using our mutual aid from other counties, and what has your response been from those counties?
Quite a bit, quite a bit of phone calls and emails from all, all the neighbors.
They're all questioning, and they're glad to help us. But when they're not in their area, then their people aren't being served. So we've gotta fix it, because we're all partners in this. And in that line, Mr. Bowen and myself and Mr. Collins met Monday in a regional conference with other counties like ourselves, and that was the number one topic of discussion, was funding for EMS. When you've got a two-point-three to three-million-dollar amount coming at you to fund personnel that you have to have, yes, we're scrambling. And I, and, and I, the last meeting, I challenged people to come to this podium to tell us where we're gonna get it from. And it can't be solar, because solar's five years from now, we need it tomorrow. So just, I keep saying, be patient, I know you're angry, I'm angry. I wish I'd have seen this survey I got today. It lays out the whole plan, and we're gonna have to do it. And it's not gonna be pretty, it's gonna hurt. But what's gonna hurt is if I call nine-one-one and my husband, who has a heart condition, dies right in front of me because the squad's not coming. If my granddaughter, who has seizures, dies in front of me because the squad didn't come because we couldn't pay the bills. That's the reality of it. It's not about everybody's fire trucks and everybody's equipment and everybody, all these people in this room, you are dedicated, a hundred and fifty percent dedicated people. But the day has changed, the time has come, they've been warning us, and now rubber meets road, just like Ms. Ingram said. Thank you.
Mr. Ruett.
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight, that came to come out, and they came out. Thank y'all for coming out and speaking. And Ms. Norton, to your question there, I wonder where everybody is, oh, you were here from come October, that, that, and, and wondering why, even though we've had all these meetings here, that's just typically the way it works. I'll tell y'all something that we, we would not even address yet, when we talking about the state, um, what they require us to do. When you start pushing back on the state, I tell you, probably Dion, David, Brian, John, and all them will probably agree with this. I guarantee you, it won't be long before the state requires every ambulance to be ALS. While we're doing this, we ought to be moving towards ALS in every unit and only ALS, no more of this BLS. We can get, finally get ahead of the curve while we're doing this. And, um, I mean, you're gonna get the best out of the best hiring pool when you do that anyway. You know, you're gonna get the most qualified, the ones with the proper certification. Also, and I know I recently brought a, a couple of things to y'all, and we'll discuss that later on, about some, about some possible options to grow our volunteer base. It's a small option, but it could be money savings, and it could be a huge, um, uptick in volunteerism. I mean, if, if they don't go this way, you've got no other way. So, um, we'll keep fighting, and I, I'm, I'm still educating myself, I'm a little bit behind the eight ball, not because I chose to be, but, um, I'm still, I'm still fighting along here, and, um, we'll, we'll have some more discussions, and, uh, I do have some thoughts, and I don't wanna throw monkey wrench in it, but, um, you know, it's, uh, there's more discussions we can have, and, um, I'd be, I'd be glad to continue to move forward in my recovery here and get with you guys, and, and you, you as well, Ms. Norton. I don't like to say guys, because I feel like, feel like I'm leaving the lady out, but I do mean you when I say that as well, because you're one of us, and, and you're, and, and I just wanna extend that appropriately to you as well. So, um, we are, we got, we got some new channels we can look at, we got a few new things we can look at. Dion was talking about the, um, about the, uh, um, like a, uh, like a first patient style ER. Hold on, that's all I can say, hold on, bro, hold on. Something's ticking, and that's all I'll say.
All right, we sound good, John, thank you. Mr. Toth, anything?
Um, no, I'm gonna stay within my, my toe, toe myself, I said self, I'm not gonna say much. So, listening to the young lady talk about the optional answering a nine-one-one call and then only being one, and I, I was aware of this as of about three and a half weeks ago, one staffed ambulance in the whole county of Notaway, that's unacceptable, very much so. That's not enough. But I can't help but to Levi Bryan's department, Department of Burkeville. You know, we keep saying there's one, one staffed ambulance, when really, they're, they're. You know, we keep saying there's one, one-staffed ambulance, when really, they're 24 hours, is that right, Chief? They're 24 hours, and they're within our county too. And I knew what she was speaking of specifically, it was one-staffed EMS, Nottaway.
From Nottaway Emergency Squad.
Right, not including Burkeville. But that still isn't acceptable. A tragic wreck could require three or four. Burkeville, what we have, another one, and the surrounding area. We've gotta figure out a way to get through this and get it funded and manage it. Three is what we really need. I see Buddy putting up three, I agree. It wasn't so long ago, I remember there was three. And that's declined, and they cannot blame it on volunteers because they're 95% paid. They can blame it on not having enough money to fund the EMS workers. And I'm with John on it. We need, we need more ALS, all ALS, really. That's what we need. That should be our goal. And I know the struggles that the Nottaway EMS is facing, but we gotta have another ambulance. And me speaking personally toward this tax levy, and we're not gonna go into any figures, but if there is a levy that's being proposed forced on the citizens, did it go specifically to staff another ambulance with ALS members on there? And that's the only thing that I will vote for that that money can be used for. It will not be a lump-sum check payment issued to Nottaway EMS from per boat, toast boat. That's all I gotta say.
I'd like to say thank you to everybody that came tonight. Thank you to everybody that's attended meetings that we've had, that we've kinda just set up, make a few phone calls and say, "Hey, can everybody get together?" And we did. I've learned a lot the last couple of weeks as somebody that's not been involved with the emergency squads. So, thank you, everybody, for participating. We'll have numbers and ideas. We're trying to have at least three ideas at the work session, and we'll try to pick the best ones for the citizens. Always remember that you get what you pay for, so we wanna make sure we're not just looking at price. We wanna make sure we're getting the right, right setup to get the citizens protected. So, again, thank you for everybody that came tonight. John, you wanna make a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion, cool, John.
All in favor, stand up.
All right.
All right, John, thank you. Hey, Abby?